And it is six o'clock. All right, folks, it's six o'clock. We'll start our regular meeting Tuesday, August the 15th, and a call to order and pledge of allegiance. Pam, prayer. Mike, okay. You would please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the United States of America. And to the republic which is founded, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father who art in heaven, as we come tonight, trying to do the best that we think as commissioners for the city of Mount Pleasant, I always pray that you will help us and guide us to do the right thing. And just pray that you just continue blessing our city, and we pray for the United States of America as well. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. Thank y'all. All right, roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Here.
Jaclyn Granberry?
Here.
Mike Davis?
Here.
Willie Alderson?
Here.
Pam Johnston?
Here.
Alrighty, we got two sets of minutes to approve study session from July the 13th, and our regular meeting on July the 18th, and once you've had an opportunity to review it, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept study session and regular meeting.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Awards, presentations, and appointment. Mayor's presentation and appointment proclamation for Kittles Cars, and I would wish that everybody would come forward with me. Well, Willie, all right.
I'll just stay right here.
You're just sitting right there. Hey, guys, come on forward. Bring your family if you'd like to, please. But I'm gonna say a few words. We've already done this last Friday. I felt like it was important for Kittles Cars. Forty-year business, and they have been a great business to have in town. I think I heard y'all say you have four or five lots now or surrounding in this whole area. Thank y'all for what you've done. They said they had thirty-five, thirty-six employees. So that is phenomenal to have in this area, and I want to thank each and every one of you. It's phenomenal. Not gonna read this word for word, but I'll let y'all know how I go. City Mount Pleasant and rightfully proud of those who. Those businesses that bring personal pride and dedication to success and bring recognition to our city. Whereas Kittles Cars located in our city possesses these characteristics. It has provided this community with jobs and civic support. There's no question about that. Celebrating its fortyth anniversary, along with its owner James Kittles, it has been critical to Kittles to receive honors and recognition for having touched and influenced the lives of the people of Mount Pleasant. Whereas City of Mount Pleasant's mayor, the point minister wishes to join in honoring Kittles Cars, their dedication to the city of Mount Pleasant. And again, this is for their fortyth anniversary. We go out and get some photographs.
Yes.
Everybody, please.
Chief, I think they're, oh, we got one there. Good. We can all take pictures.
Oh, and I got a question. So, does the chief win everything out there, Brian? Because we said.
He won nothing. I had it really.
Everybody laughing about this. He said, "Well, there really won't be a ticket pool. They'll just walk over here and go." Uh, Michael, hey.
I had a very good one.
Thank you. Thank you, man. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, the ongoing joke that day was the fact that it seems like everywhere Michael goes in that right field, he seems to win. And I said, "Well, he'll just win it. They won't even pull a ticket," so. Again, thank y'all and congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next one is appointment to the Murray Regional Airport Board, and the airport board has sent us a letter requesting that Justin Robinett continue to serve. Uh, Justin has been there in that role, what, Kate?
Uh, three years.
Three years, and.
One term.
And also owns a plane there, so he's, well, actually a couple of them, so he is an important part of that airport, so. Uh, if everybody, do we need a motion or anything on that?
Yep.
So if I would entertain a motion that Justin Robinett be added back again to the Murray Regional Airport. Got a, got a motion?
Got a motion.
We have a second.
You got a second.
Second. All those in favor? All those.
We got it.
Got it. Okay, good. Willie got me messed up. All right, number six. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven sixteen. This is a public hearing and a final reading. An ordinance amending Title fourteen zoning and land use control, chapter two of the zoning ordinance. The Mount Pleasant Municipal Code being the same zoning ordinance for the city of Mount Pleasant, including municipal zoning map. Uh, it'll be changing property at the South Main Enterprise Road from, um, low-density residential to light industrial. We're gonna take, I'm gonna take a minute and let it, Chris, if you don't mind, would you give us the outcome of the planning commission meeting? Kind of quickly, and what happened there, and then Cory, if you would, I'd like for you to go over the sheet you provide us before we have any motions or anything.
Somebody else had that in front of them.
Yep.
Planning Commission voted unanimously to change the zoning to light industrial, low-density R1. There was a site plan presented, uh, not necessarily needed for the rezone, but was presented to show what the property would be used for potentially. So the planning commission was able to observe that, and again, they voted unanimously.
Thank you, Chris, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Pam, you're on the board for the commission. Anything you'd like to add to that?
I was, it was great to have so many of the public and the residents of that area, especially Jackson Street, attend. And, um, after looking at the, the plot and everything, I think there were some misconceptions about what's being planned to go there. Um, and I went out there myself. I know who certainly has. I don't know, I'm sure most of us have. But, um, one after one person spoke and everybody, we all gave our, what we saw and what, and showed them the plan, then really nobody else spoke.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing, and this will be the final reading. Would anybody in the audience care to speak? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Uh, state your name and your address, please, sir.
Jared Smith, uh, one twenty-two Jackson Street.
Okay.
Okay, I have just a few concerns. I was here on the July. I wasn't here last Thursday. I was here the one.
The planning commission.
The planning commission.
So I've worked in a rail yard. And I understand this isn't really a rail yard. It's supposedly gonna be a repair area that has six tracks, two of which are going into a garage. I'm assuming the work is gonna be done in a garage. I know a engine is loud. I know, uh, connecting and disconnecting rail cars is loud. I don't know how this might adversely affect anyone looking to purchase a home now in that area if this had these concerns that I have. My kids are grown, but when they were growing up, well, particularly the boys, him and friends would play back there. Is there gonna be fence up? Just for safety of, there's a lot of children in our neighborhood. Is there gonna be anything other than the trees for a sound barrier? Are they gonna do anything other than supposedly leave that tree line up, which actually starts getting really thin at my house going west? I just, you know, if it brings down home value because of a noisy neighborhood, it's always been quiet. I've always had a field and a patch of woods and a field in my backyard, and I've been there almost twenty-two years. So, you know, that's my concern. My concern is if I decide one day to sell my home, is that being back there gonna affect my marketability? You know, it's just things that I have concerns about, and, uh, that's really it. I mean, I wasn't here last Thursday. Um, I didn't realize it was like a discussion-type meeting about this thing. So I would have came. I was, I could have. But anyway, uh, thank you for your time. I just want y'all to know how I feel and the things that, you know, pressed on me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, let me just say one thing, because I think a lot of times, I guess we get a misinterpretation of this right here, you know, when it comes before us as a commission. We have the fact, um, we can't use, you know, a, you know, possibly a complaint, you know, because of noise or something like that. It's not, it's not something that we can judge the property.
Most of those items would come out in the site plan.
Right, in the site plan.
That would be the time for you to state your complaint about the, that what we're doing is only rezoning.
Land.
The land.
Of the rezoning or the pass.
No, only rezoning the land, and then the site plan will come forth, and that would be the time to discuss with the, um, True Rail, what they were or not putting back there. I mean, they could even decide to sell it. But silverman, but the thing of it is, we're only doing the rezoning of the land, not what's gonna actually go on the land.
I thought the rezoning.
It is confusing. What happened was it was approved by the planning commission, but regardless of the planning commission, the full commission has to approve it or it's not a done deal. And so now it's front of the full commission to vote on it. So it's not rezoned until the full commission has two readings, and this is the second reading. It is confusing.
Seventh reading of the rezoning.
Yeah.
Yeah. I misinterpreted.
No, that's fine.
No, thank you.
You're here for the public hearing, just, that's very.
You don't know if you don't ask.
Yeah. We just wanted, we just wanted you to know what we had to do tonight, and what we were actually voting on tonight. It's not per se what's going there. It's only the rezoning of the property.
Yeah. Yep. We'll get to you, Niss.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, anyone else care to speak on this? Yes, sir. If you would, please give your, come up and give your name and address.
My name is Neil King. I've been at, uh, one twenty-eight Pierce Place, which is right off of Jackson. Uh, the bank's right behind my house and tree line. Is there, I, I, some of my concerns are the same as Mr. Smith, but is that existing tree line that's gonna stay? That's my understanding, right?
Yes.
Yes.
We can't guarantee that. That's, the owner has said that.
We can't, right.
We're not, we're not voting, you know, we're not voting on those trees staying, all being removed.
So.
That would be at the planning commission at the site.
Yeah. In my neighborhood, I already have not a major problem, but a minor problem with wildlife coming in. If that's destroyed, I'm, we're gonna have more wildlife, you know? Ossums, skunks, groundhogs.
I live in the city and I got the same problem.
Amen.
Yes.
I mean, but that's just gonna make the problem even worse if that tree line is destroyed, you know? And you don't, you can't tell me if that bank's gonna stay?
We won't, we will not know until we get a actual site plan. And I would encourage you to come back when that is presented. It will be published in the paper.
Then it'll be the planning commission.
And it will be at the planning commission, which meets on the.
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of every month.
Six o'clock on every month.
Then it won't come back to us no more.
Yep. So I would encourage you to attend that. So you will see. Now, of course, I've spoken with them directly, and it's my interpretation that it's staying, but that could change when it comes before the planning commission for the site, final site plan.
Will there be somebody here from True Rail at that time that could answer some questions?
Yes, sir.
There is somebody here.
He's here right now.
But, but even if tonight they say they're gonna keep the trees, there may be something that the contractors say later. They're not voting on that at all. They're only voting on the land and whether it's appropriate to rezon the land.
Just to rezon.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else care to speak? All right. If you'd like to, please, sir, please come up and state your name and. We know you're with True Rail.
My name is Chris Brown. I'm the education manager at True Rail. I'm willing to speak to you. These guys are, what they're concerned, so Mark Smith, he's not here this week. He's on vacation, so. I will try to answer any questions that I can. I may not have all the details. And y'all have a lot of noise. I don't know if you know, now we already currently do repair work over there in this graveyard here. We, reason we're looking for another site is because we're in that capacity. We have four more customer vessels to be there. As far as noise is concerned, we don't work at night. We work Monday through Thursday from six till five when it begins, and then from six to three on Thursday, if we're going for a weekend. So if you're concerned about noise, I don't think you'll have any more noise if you would just hire folks or robots if you have around here that will have some weldings running, maybe a tail hammering. We only have repair cars, like the engine engines. We don't work on engines. If there are engine moving parts in and out of the lot. So, um, what the proposed plan is, I'm thinking right now, is Tennessee Southern bring cars from the interchange like they do now. They would set them on our property, and we would have like an electric tub for bigger those, but not, we won't have an engine, diesel engine running, moving parts around. Yeah. Just like a yard. It'd just be the hitching and not hitching. And we're pretty strict on our guys. We, I mean, we operate down in the residential area, and we don't, we don't let them bang cars together. I mean, we're there mostly because somebody else has banged them together and messed them up, so we're repairing, so. Noise is the biggest concern, and I don't think that would be an issue over the hours of work. And as far as the tree lines and stuff, certainly to mention, our intent is to not do anything to that tree line. Currently, we're gonna have a cleanness on the road so we can get, not particularly there, but some gravel, but we don't plan to disturb anything on the front of that road, but like these fellows mentioned, we have to present that site, our architect will have submit a plan to the state, and then the state will kind of tell us what we can and can't do on some of it. I don't, basically, from what I see on the property, I don't know why we would have to mess with that front entrance or those tree line. And really, all we're wanting to do is just put a track in in that field. You mentioned security. We're currently opening gate everything. I hope we'll have a full fence around it, but. That's not to say we won't, you know. Still, already in the details. I mean, we do have a site plan and have had an architect locate it. Really, it's just drawn in the paper right now. I don't know if there's one of those plats around here, but, uh, it really basically just shows our shop and with the, with the welding and the brand and all of that be done in the shop. Some of it, not all of our repairs are done in the shop, just because of the kind of cars we have. Tennessee Southern, we've got two tracks that we were doing repair work on, and we can put a little more in each one of them. We're a small business, small family business. We started small, we're trying to grow, but we really don't. We don't have the funds to build a shop either. When I have a shop, maybe where we can put cars in, put weather. It would probably be a mix of the. Yeah, this is for preliminary drawings. Like I said, we do want to have a shop where we can pull cars in, work days and bad weather days, but, uh, we will be doing work outside the shop anyway.
I'd like just to say one other thing about True Rail. If y'all remember what that property used to look like over there on Front Stave and D. True Rail is, is made at property. I'm not saying y'all, they're a hundred percent, you know? But they have made that property ninety-nine percent better than what it was.
I mean, we want to be good neighbors. I have a family in terms of, you. We've, we've been here forty years now. I don't know if anybody already knows that we've been there ever since. My granddad used one labor right at the time. Okay. But that's not a really bar. No, you're right. You know, that's a, that's a warehouse that's a good part.
But at least it shows you, you know, what kind of, like, what they represent.
Not my property, but my backyard, and in the wintertime, when there's no tree, when there's no leaves, I can see plain day in that field. You know, it's just, uh, not my property, so, but I have concerns, and it's mainly about the noise, because I believe noise, if anything, is what would affect your ability to sail if you was too nude down the road. Or, you know, for anyone in that area, uh. So, that's why I'm. I mean, I, I said noise. I don't think it may even work what you have, we have right here, I have a filter, a lot of particles, everything is, so. Well, machines are real hot now. Besides that, is there any more questions or concerns on, I said, I may not be able to answer them all. Did I miss anything?
They, they are very open. I will tell you that, very open. Anything else? All right, Cory, your show now. You'll please go over the four findings of fact.
Well, first, to piggyback off of what Ms. Granberry and Mr. Davis said earlier, y'all are not considering this property right now, today, for this particular use by True Rail. You are looking at whether this property is appropriately zoned light industrial, for any light industrial use, not just them. They'll have a separate process to go through. Once we decide what the proper zone is for that property, then the zoning ordinance says what kind of buffer, what kind of lights, what kind of, you know, there's separate rules for each different type of zone. Okay, so you're deciding tonight whether this property should be moved from.
R1.
R1, which is low-density residential to light industrial, based off of what's around it and just the property itself. Okay, so that's what you're considering. And when you're making that decision, I love the transparency and the openness from True Rail, but they're not held to any of those things that they said today. I know y'all know that, but just keep that in mind. You were only looking at the use for this property. When you're deciding whether or not light industrial is appropriate, you need to look through these four factors and make your decision only on these factors. Number one, is the proposed amendment in agreement with the land use plan for the area? Number two, will, will there be adverse effect upon adjoining property owners? Or unless such effect can be justified by the overwhelming public good or welfare? Number three, no property owner or small group of property owners will benefit materially from the change to the detriment of the general public. Number four, conditions affecting the area have changed to a sufficient extent to warrant an amendment to the area land use plan and subsequently the zoning map.
And there's already one business out there, light industrial.
Okay, immediately adjacent to this property.
Immediately adjacent. Okay, any questions for Cory? Any questions for Cory? All right, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance twenty twenty-three, one 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 six.
The amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area.
Still learning. So I want to propose approval of this based on the four factors that we're to consider in changing the zoning ordinance.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second? I'll second it. All right, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Granberry, will you repeat what you said, just so I have it? You said something about you were looking at one of the findings of fact.
The amendment is in agreement with the land use plan for the area, and also at this.
And it is.
Adjoining property.
I'll make sure I heard you. Right. Okay. Uh, Bill White?
Yes.
Jaclyn Granberry?
Yes.
Mike Davis?
Only problem I have with doing this right here, it opens it up for whatever area else out here can keep a light industrial. And there's so many other things that can be light industrial besides True Rail. But, you know, it, it, it's a, which I know what I'm supposed to do. I'm supposed to go by this right here. And there's already one there, so I, you know, I, I might not like it, but I have to go by what's here. Right to this.
Pam Johnston?
Yes.
Willie Alderson?
Yes.
Five to nothing.
Five of them?
Yes.
Thank you very much, and thank y'all for speaking.
Thank you.
You're always welcome. All right, monthly report from mayor, and I'm gonna be real brief with this, but it's third Thursday. Everybody tried to get out and enjoy it because, uh, I know Willie's on this group, but we have a new young lady now. Her name is Haverly Pennington. And she is now over the Main Street Group, and I have been looking at that I Love Mount Pleasant Facebook site some, and she's already hitting it. I'll call it.
Mm-hmm.
And with a lot of really positive stuff, so I would encourage you to come out. I think the weather's supposed to be beautiful Thursday afternoon. So I'd encourage you to get out and enjoy. Monthly financial budget report, please, ma'am.
I emailed out the financials on Friday for the cash reports, the, um, profit and loss, cash disbursement, the journal listing. So you have all the reports now for July. Last month, I know we had said that with the fiscal year just starting, um, we don't have the June thirtieth reports yet, and July was just starting as well, so funds look okay. If you look at the cash report, that's usually the one that we changed, and that's something that shows you the stand, where the city stands at a certain period in time. Um, our cash stayed pretty stable, um, even though the month of July, we opened up purchasing again. We had purchasing closed all the way from May and June, so we thought, I, I really thought July, we were gonna take a major hit on our cash, because everybody went back to buying everything that they had stopped for two months, but us cash stayed pretty steady, but I know in the month of August, you will see it go down in the water and sewer fund, just because we did go ahead and make our payment with our ARBA fund that we had been sitting with for the last year, just because the, it was our turn to uh, put our match out there for USDA to pick up there. So USDA did have their closing with us on the second section of the loan last week. Um, that's done. The funds are already in the bank, so when the next invoice is the sewer plant come due, we have those funds in the bank already, and then once we make those payments, our grant funds will pick up again, which is the five-point-five million dollar grant from USDA. So that's probably the biggest section of the grant that's picking up here pretty soon. Something that didn't come up at the study session, and this question was not brought up, or we didn't go in too much depth, was, um, the commissioners that met with us, uh, in regards to the debt. Um, already know this, but I wanted to put this in our minutes. Um, the debt borrowing resolutions that are on the agenda tonight, those scenarios that Julianne had done and that we presented to y'all at the study session that showed our coverage are all based on case study four from our, um, MTS water and sewer study. So as long as we follow case study four, we're covered. Our revenues are enough to be able to do that borrowing. But I just wanted y'all to know, in a way indirectly, you are approving for case study number four to be implemented all the way through for the next, whatever number of years, the study says, and then um, after that, just look at, and we're gonna be looking at that periodically anyway, just to make sure that we're staying on track with our rates and everything. with our rates and everything, so we can keep our water and sewer fund in the black. But I just wanted to get that to you all, because I know the commissioners that individually met, we brought that up in their meetings. I just wanted to make sure that Mr. Davis and Ms. Granberry knew that case study number four is what the whole scenario is based on for the borrowing.
But we know it's got to be done.
It has to be done. Yeah.
It's the bottom line.
Bottom line.
It has to be done.
It has to be done. And I think we're good as long as, you know, we follow through it. But sometimes when you approve one thing, they're interconnected, and I felt like I needed to say that. The interfund loan paperwork for the $500,000 that were transferring from gas to general, I submitted all the paperwork to the Comptroller's Office for it. They're just waiting for the ordinance to pass tonight for the budget paperwork that they asked us to do. So once I have that ordinance after the first reading, I'm supposed to send them all that tomorrow. And according to her, she'll approve it as soon as she has that document. So I should have the approval on the interfund loan transfer sometime this week from the Comptroller's Office. But if you all have any questions for me, I'm here.
Again, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you, Shifra.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion and a vote on accepting the budget, or the monthly financial and budget report.
I'll make a motion to accept the monthly financial budget report.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Posed. Motion carries. Monthly report from city manager.
The only thing I wanted to bring up, kind of follows up to the email that I brought, that's sent out today about the strategic planning, just kind of gave you an update on where we were with things. And it's kind of funny, the things like the development process and access fees are not even on there because they came after. But I think we'll set a time with MTS between now and the end of the year, if it's okay with all of you. We usually do it Saturday, about a half day, to get that updated. And I just wanted to make sure everybody got that. Any questions, make sure you reach out to me.
Yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Special reports from other departments, wastewater liaison. And I swore I saw Matthew there earlier.
I know. I had to sit down and ask him why he was here. He's there for something that's on the agenda in September. So he got to go home and hang out.
So he's a little ahead of himself.
He got to hang out with some of his parents, so he's going to.
Yeah, good for him.
Basically, the sewer trunk line is paperwork closing out, so that's complete. The Rainey Street project will proceed as soon as all the materials and equipment is delivered, and that's in process. And the large wastewater treatment plant, the lab, everything is framed out, drywall is hung, and they're doing the mechanical plumbing and electrical work. And then, I think I mentioned at the study session, because of the problem with getting the electrical equipment that we've known was going to happen, they're going to shut down operations until early 2024, when all the electrical equipment is delivered. Then we'll pick right back up again.
All right. Anything else?
Good.
Gas report?
No report. Thank you.
All right. New business. Ordinance 2023-1117. This is a first reading. An ordinance of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, adopting the annual budget and tax rate for the year beginning July the 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2024. And I think I can explain this. Our budget is approved by the State of Tennessee Comptroller's Office, but lo and behold, we did not know that there are about four little additional items, and this is nicely.
They want us to use their template.
Yeah, they want us to use their template.
Mm-hmm.
And we had never done this before. So again, I want to reiterate that the budget is approved, and all this is doing is adopting their.
Ordinance template.
Yeah, that's a good way to put it. Ordinance template.
It's the same numbers. Nothing's changed.
Yeah.
It's just a different format that they did not tell us that they wanted before.
Yeah. So any questions? Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2023-1117.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
All in favor. Okay.
Resolution 20.
Not in favor of the budget, but in favor of.
Okay. I just want to make sure I had it right.
All right. Resolution 2023-34. This is a public reading, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, naming the Mount Pleasant Waste, the Mount Pleasant Water Plant, the Darrell.
Darrell Dean.
I don't know why in the world I can't even remember Dean.
We did not receive, unless there's anybody in the audience, any other suggestions or nominations. I think you all received the letter that I wrote. That is the city and city staff recommendation. But this is a public meeting. If anybody wants to bring anything, it was advertised in the paper that they could submit a name. I just, we did not receive any. And.
Kate, could you explain it, why you want to name it the Darrell Dean, for people that's here?
Yeah. So Darrell Dean is an employee that's been with the city for over 47 years. He's literally just retiring this month of August. He has managed our sewer system the entire time. The old water plant, quite often, most of the time, was out of compliance, and he always had to deal with that issue. I was told that whenever it rained, he had to be out there, literally with a bucket, making sure that water stayed out of the plant. He had to be there at all hours, 24 hours a day, to take care of that, to the point when I started, I think he had 500 hours of comp time because he was here all the time. So we are where we are because of his dedication to the water system. And now we have a state-of-the-art plant, probably one of the nicest in the state of Tennessee. And we had a ribbon cutting in May of 2016, and he stayed to make sure everything was okay with the new plant. And now he's retiring this month. And I just thought it was, make a, we can show how much we appreciate all of his efforts by calling it the Darrell Dean Waste Water Treatment Facility.
You keep trying to throw waste in there, too. But it's not. It's the water you drink.
Sorry.
Yeah.
And then if this goes as planned, we would have, we'd have a sign made and have a ceremony out there, obviously include Darrell, who I've already talked to about this, and go from there.
So if it gets misinterpreted somewhere along the line.
We won't have the word waste in there.
We actually will need to read the method resolution before we sign it, because I had left blank.
Yeah.
To see if anybody else was nominated, but.
We can vote on it with the name of Darrell Dean, but you can see that it's, we didn't fill it in in case.
So you're fine if we do that.
Yes. This is also a public hearing.
Yeah.
In case.
I'm getting there. I'm just trying to make sure you're all right. All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody care to speak on it? Please, admit the minutes for, show that no one cared to speak.
I make a motion for a resolution 2023-34 that we name Mr. Darrell Dean of the Water Treatment Facility, due to his dedication to the city and the plant.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Resolution 2023-35, a resolution amending the capital improvement plan for the city.
Mayor and commissioners, we talked about this briefly at the study session. Hopefully you were able to get your magnifying glass out and read all that. But we, Shifra and Philip did a good job of actually kind of, I think it made it easier to read as far as what's in it. And this is basically what's in, some of these items are in our budget this year's capital, and some are forecasted out as needs. Doesn't necessarily mean that we have the funding for them. Funding sources are to be identified in some areas. Some areas, we do have plans for funding sources. But it's just so that we're all looking at the future and what our needs are. And this is updated every year when we do the budget. So we adopted the first capital improvement plan ever for the City of Mount Pleasant last year, and this is going to be the second time it's been adopted and updated.
Correct. All right. Any comments or questions from the commission? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We approve resolution 2023-35.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Resolution 2023-36. We've actually got two in a row, and it pertains to the same thing, but we will go through each one of them. A resolution authorizing the issuance of a not to exceed $7 million in aggregate principal amount of the water and sewer revenue and tax bonds for the City of Mount Pleasant.
Mayor and commissioners, as you know, Julianne was here at the study session, kind of walking you through both these resolutions. Shifra and I, for some of it, Cory, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them. But you know, this is a large number of larger projects that we're trying to get taken care of that are pretty critical in need. And also, what the driving force behind this was the EDA grant that, to finish the match, which is the water loop line around the city, the match was over $3 million, and that's a portion of this. And the other critical projects, so the Shegog Pump Station, Sheepneck, I'm sorry, not Shegog, Sheepneck, and our meter program, to get that going right away. But happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Kate or?
And when this resolution passes, there's 20 days for anybody to come speak against it.
Not something we want to do, but as I said earlier, we don't really have a lot of choice, and this is going to make sure we support the city with good, clean water for a long time.
This is like I heard somebody say, which I don't know, Doug, I don't know if y'all affected up there or not, but no rough to bug you. Kevin Henson told me, you know, the other day, that the city was working on the water lines, you know, and it took the water person away from them completely, you know, so.
What area was that?
I'd be up on, what, north side, up to a third. Yeah. So, you know, it goes to show, it really needs to be.
Needs done, doesn't it? All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution 2023-36.
Got a motion? Do we have a second? Got a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Resolution 2023-37. Again, this is the same thing, but it's a resolution authorizing the issuance of water and revenues tax bonds in the, for Mount Pleasant, an aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $7 million in one or more series, making the provision for the issuance, sale, and payment of said bonds, establishing the terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom, and providing for the levy of taxes for the payment of principal of premium, if any, and interest on these bonds.
Mayor and commissioners, again, if you've got any questions on it, we're happy to answer them. But if the mayor said it, very similar to the first.
Basically the same thing. Just saying, we'll repay it now.
Yeah.
Any comments, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution 2023-37.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. All those in favors?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Resolution 2023-38, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant to authorize the city to purchase gas from Symmetry Energy Solutions at a forward physical fixed price.
Mayor and members of the commission, if you look at the resolution that's prepared, it basically says we are following on the attachment, the yellow area that's been highlighted, and this forward physical fixed pricing would go through March of 2026. This is a recommendation of Zach Littrell from Symmetry. And Cory, do you want to comment on it? And if you have any questions, we'll attempt to answer them for you.
We asked Zach to write us the paragraph of what the plan was. I'll just read that to you. The City of Mount Pleasant Fixed Price Plan is a forward-looking tool used to help the City of Mount Pleasant limit the volatility out of their natural gas rate. The plan uses multiple buying tiers to take advantage of natural gas price on the future market, to lock in a fixed physical piece on specific future volume of natural gas. By doing so, the city can fix a portion of their variable gas cost for that time period. The current fixed price tier being considered in addition to the previously executed fixed price would result in the city having approximately 75% of their historic natural gas needs fixed for the upcoming winter of 2023, 2024, and 70% of historic usage through October of 2024. Then for the winter of 2024, 2025, the city would have 55% of historic use fixed, along with 70% of summer of 2025, and 45% fixed for the winter of 25, 26. This plan is based on historical monthly average usage and does not get to over 75% fixed in any month, resulting in the city receiving approximately 25% of historical gas supply needs at the then-current market rate. The plan does anticipate additional physical fixed price tiers in 2024, increase the percentage fixed before October 24, in order to increase the percentage fixed for the winter of 2024 and 25, and extend the plan beyond March of 2026. A lot of words.
Him, this dead just cost us.
You did this, not me. If I had tried to do it, it would be a lot. If you look at the resolution, the attachment, the yellow strip, that's what you're approving. It makes a lot more sense in the yellow strip than it does.
Yeah.
And when do they expect this to go? Into a, you know.
I think going to market before October.
It will go before October. It's October through March.
Yeah. So once this is approved, they'd be shopping the market in September.
Yeah.
Not now, once, well.
Mm-hmm. Well, they're watching it daily.
Yeah.
Would be.
What we got into last year, you know, when we got, and that's why, that's why, that's why it's hard. You know, it was, we thought it was going to jump up.
We had the warmest winter.
According to our, say, paper that makes the bottom drop there.
Yep.
We didn't lose any money.
Well, if you go by that chart, I don't know how we did. I mean, I'm just saying, but, I mean, I don't know. I mean, when it's 461, and it goes all the way down to a dollar and a half, you know. I don't know.
Any other comments, questions? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion. We approve resolution 2023-38.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. I think y'all would call roll call, please, ma'am.
Bill White?
Yes.
Jacqueline Granberry?
Yeah.
Mike Davis?
If he was doing it now, I would be. But wasn't in October, I don't know.
Ms. Alderson?
Yes.
Ms. Johnston?
Yes.
Four to one.
Four to one.
All right, passes. All right. Resolution 2023-39, a resolution of the City of Mount Pleasant, approving a change of auditing firm from Blankenship CPA to Putman and Hancock. And I know Kate and Shifra have met with them. This is not, I would say, necessarily by choice. Blankenship came to us, and I don't know how to say this, other than just tell you what they said, and we're too small for them. They have gotten very, very large. But I think, I'm not wanting to speak for Kate or Shifra, but I think you were very pleased with the outcome of that meeting.
Yes, we actually had Mr. Hancock and an associate from his office, and they spent about three hours with us. So we're off to a good start.
Good.
So basically, with this resolution, you're approving us working with them, and the mayor's would sign off on the letter of engagement.
And this is for two years, correct?
One.
One, okay.
Just one year, fiscal year ending June 2023. And then we will be, this winter, bidding out the services again. They could get the service, but we'd be bidding it out.
They come very highly recommended. I've checked outside, and they are.
We've done the same, yes.
Yeah.
So is the cost going to be the same, or we already paying?
The cost is the same that we're already paying. Same as the agreement we.
I mean, the agreement that we had with the, okay.
They accepted the same terms with the old contract. The only thing in the old contract that was going to change is this Comptroller's Office has asked us to convert our chart of accounts to match the Comptroller's Office. There's a certain specific requirement that I have for this year. That was something they informed all cities in the last fiscal year.
All cities.
So that was going to be an increase to us anyway, even if we stayed with Blankenship. But most letters of engagement have a clause in it for anything extra that the Comptroller Office made last minute, asked them to do. And this was something that was not in our original bid or anything, but the Comptroller's Office has asked all cities to comply. So it is going to be a little bit higher than what we paid Blankenship, but we would have had to pay that to Blankenship anyway as well, if they were still.
Any comments or questions? Entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept resolution 2023-39.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a number of seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries. Resolution 2023-40, resolution of the city approving a memorandum of understanding with Murray County, Tennessee, regarding the use of the county American Recovery Plan.
Mayor and commissioners, as I mentioned at the study session, we've already passed a resolution on the $698,000 that we're getting through the county. But this resolution is actually including that money and the $1,050,000 that we are getting, that is flowing through the county that we are due to get. So it's a little bit different than I mentioned at the study session. This is including all the money that we're getting through ARPA and matches. And this is. the money that we're getting through ARPA and, and matches, and this is what the county wanted. So, uh, we're basically saying we're going to follow TDEX rules in this process, and that we're going to make, the city of Mount Pleasant is good for the match on, on these. And, uh, Daniel Murphy did approve the, this resolution, and that's what they asked, they passed something similar in the county, is my understanding from Mayor Bud as well.
Okay. Any questions for Kate? Hearing none, entertain a motion.
Make a motion, we approve resolution 2023-40.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And mayor, if you don't mind, this would be where we would insert this resolution that everybody has in front of them, that we are adding to the agenda, resolution 2000, 2023-41. Um, we are applying for some parks money through the Blue Cross Blue Shield Places Grant, and we submitted it last week and didn't realize it needed, uh, the commission's approval. And, um, that we need this, this approved as part of the, um, grant process. And this is where, you all know that we're going to be, uh, paving and improving the parking out at the ball fields on First Avenue. This is to, um, improve the Rotary Halong Park and to put some things in there that the children can play on, address the water, the storm, uh, storm water that's always out there issue, if we get the grant. Uh, we've applied for it three times and it's not been granted, and the feedback we've gotten is the park that we were using did not impact enough population. And we have so many people that use this other park, we're hoping that we have better luck with this grant.
What park was it?
It's, it's right next.
No, I'm talking about what park? What park?
It was the old one, it was Gardenia. Yeah, we've tried three times for that.
Is this the grant that Tony just received?
I think Tony is just applying for it. I read that same article, I think they're applying for it for their splash pad, because this is.
Yeah, they had said they were applying, because I had to read it twice, I thought.
They sounded very confident they were going to get it, but I think it's applying at the same time working.
Kate, I just want to make sure I'm understanding correct. Blue Cross Blue Shield saying that there wasn't enough people.
Some of the feedback was.
Using Gardenia Park for.
I think it was more youth. They wanted to see, and this is just conversations, they didn't submit anything in writing saying that, but they wanted, um, a park that had more, more usage. Of course, you get more usage when you put things in the park, so it kind of goes both ways.
Basketball.
We're going to put a basketball goal and hopefully maybe a pavilion, but, you know, that was the original feedback.
Yeah.
Only thing about, I, I'll say this for Gardenia Park, and I know, you know, about the basketball goal and all that. But when I hear the June, you know, 10th at Gardenia Park, and it's a pretty good gathering that comes there, and they don't have a shelter there. To me, it just doesn't, you know, look that, that's why to me a shelter, I would think a shelter would be. I mean, you have, you have, you have a lot of older people that goes there, you know, they out there in that heat. I mean, they have to burn their own tents or whatever.
We're hoping with this.
Hey, that's just, you know, that's just.
Well, it's, it is, it is part of the strategic plan, and the strategic plan said the first thing we were going to do was a basketball court.
I don't think.
But we, we are hoping that.
If you go back to 2017, there was going to be a pavilion prepared.
We, and it, it, we're hoping that we can pay for it out of this, the money that we're borrowing from gas.
And the pavilion should have been already been there according to that.
Okay.
Was this on the agenda that was published on Friday or Thursday? So we need to amend the agenda and that.
That's what I was thinking, that's the reason why I was going to ask that next question.
And we didn't amend it until it's.
All right, I would entertain a motion that we add the two items to this agenda, being resolution 2023-41 and the AIA document G701-27.
Change order.
I'm just listing what they're listed as.
Okay.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2023-41, and also, uh, AIA document G701-2017.
Add it to the agenda.
To add it to the agenda.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now then, we'll entertain a motion on resolution 2023-41.
I make a motion to accept resolution 2023-41.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Four to one. All right. AIA document G701-27. And this is a change order for our new admin in fire hall.
Yes, it's for, uh, electric work, um, at, at the Bond Street Fire Hall, and this, uh, the reason for this is because we're going underground with the electric line.
Good. I mean, you don't have to worry about yanking them down.
Uh, we thought that this, this would be covered under the initial bid for the project, but, uh, the feedback we're getting from the electric company is we're going to have to do things differently, so it's an additional $4,456 and 14 cents.
Makes sense to me. Don't like it, but makes sense.
I mean, this year was another project that was supposed to have been paid by grants, and it's not. But, I mean, Phillip thinks we made it, so, you know, these are far achieved, so.
Yep.
We still waiting.
Absolutely. All right, entertain a motion that we approve AIA document G701-27.
Make a motion that we, uh, AIA document G701-2017.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Designating STBG funds for the downtown project.
Mayor and commissioners, every year we have to designate where we're going to spend our state, um, our, basically it's our, why can I think of it? The State Street. State Street A money, yeah, I could think of it. From the gas tax, it's, it, the State Street A money that we get, for some reason I was drawing a blank on that. And, uh, this year we should anticipate at, at a minimum $74,518. And before, before September, we're supposed to designate the project that we go to, and we have continued for the last few years of putting that money into the downtown revitalization. I don't need a vote on it, it's just me in the minutes telling you that that's what we're designating the money to.
Any questions for Kate? Hearing none, okay. Acknowledged CT, 0253 debt form to the state for closing on sewer debt of a million eight ninety-two.
And that's another thing, mayor and commissioners, it just needs to be in the minutes that